All right, welcome everybody to the regular Galt City Council meeting for August the 19th. Mr. Hughes, can you please give us a report from the closed session?
Yes, there are no I's to report out.
All right, thank you, sir. Now I'll call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Councilmember Pratton.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. Before we stand to do the silent prayer, I've asked the city manager if he'd allow me a second to mention the passing of a former mayor, city council member of Galt, Andrew Meredith. Andrew was, sorry, I'm looking at my notes, Andrew was elected in 2006 at the age of 26, very young council member, he served term as mayor. He was also an Iraq veteran and he did three and a half years in the city council, left the council in May of 2010. So I just ask that you all keep his family and his, his family in your prayers tonight. So please join me for a silent prayer and followed by a flag sweep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Tina, can you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council is recorded with closed captioning. The recording will be cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. The recording will also be video streamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, August 22nd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 23rd at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. Once posted, the recording of this meeting can be viewed on demand at youtube.com/metrol cable 14.
Thank you, Tina. We'll move on to item F, agenda approval additions and deletions. Do we have anything this evening? All right, well with that, we'll move on to item G, presentations. Our first presentation this evening is going to be the Parks and Rec Commission Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2024 to 25.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to bring up our chairperson of the Parks and Rec Commission, Carrie Graham.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for letting me present tonight. I've had the privilege of serving on the Parks and Rec for quite a few years and this year in the 24 and 25 Parks and Rec Commissions, I've been able to serve with Chris Bronson, Brooke Stammer, Chris Smith, and Francisco Gallegos. Over the course of this last year, we've had a lot of success in discussing the Walker Park updates, lighting and landscape district map, the weed abatement map, Parks and Rec Open Space Master Plan, the Chabolas Gate Park, Angora Aquatic Center, and the SLIDE project with that. We've only had two meetings that were canceled due to a lack of quorum, so we've been pretty successful this year. And we've also been able to discuss the conceptual of Walker Park along with RHAA Master Plan, Liberty Ranch subdivision park naming, and we've also done Walker Park Phase Two and the park naming for the new Elliott subdivision. We've discussed development fees and the naming of those parks and they've been submitted to you as well, and the parks overview of everything else. It's been a pleasure, we've had a good year, and we're looking forward to helping out with a lot more with the Parks and Rec. Any questions?
Council, you have any questions for Ms. Graham? Well, I just want to say thank you for you and everybody else that serves on that commission. It's very important, and I'm glad to hear that the attendance, you know, was good without, I know we struggled with that last year with having a quorum, so I want to thank you for all of you that are, that are members of that. And thank you, Carrie.
Yes, thank you.
Our second presentation this evening is item G2, which is the Public Safety Committee Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2024 to 25.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our chair was unavailable tonight as she came down ill, but has provided a written statement that I'll read into the record for council. And it starts, "Good evening, Mayor and Council Members and also Community Members, and I didn't realize you were all coming out for this speech, but thank you for being here. Our Chair's name is Jessica Selby and she serves as the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, and she would be here tonight to present the Committee's Annual Report for Fiscal Year 24-25. First, I'd like to recognize the members of the Committee who served this past year. We have Vice Chair Chris Shamber, Kerdip Sandu, Jamie Cates, whose term ended in 2024, and Jerry Sodder, appointed in 2025. Former Chair Tim Reed, whose term ended in 2024, of course, he's now on the council, and Jason Hubert, whose appointment started in 2025. And then we, of course, have Chair Selby. Vice Mayor Sandu also serves as a non-voting member to the Public Safety Committee. They're supported by myself, the police chief, the public works director, the fire chief, when necessary, the Parks and Rec Senior Manager, and our staff liaison, my executive assistant, Wendy Masters. The Committee met four times this past year in July, September, November, and March. Meetings are generally scheduled for the fourth Monday of every other month. Meetings in January and May were canceled due to scheduling and membership changes. In July 2024, Public Safety Committee reviewed the prior annual report and discussed the US Supreme Court decision in the Grants Pass versus Johnson and its potential impacts for the city of Galt, and that's related to homelessness. We also discussed traffic concerns, including truck parking on Amador Avenue. In September 2024, discussion focused on the C Street construction project and related traffic control. The Committee also reviewed school safety issues, including a Nation, Nation Ride reports to threats, and considered their implications here locally. In 2020, excuse me, November 2024, the Committee reviewed the Corillian Boulevard Safety Project and crosswalk improvements at Lake Park and Corillian. Fire Department provided updates on academy training and recruitment, and the Committee supported the annual community toy drive. In March of 2025, the Committee elected Chair Selby with Chris Shamber as Vice Chair. They reviewed the fireworks ordinance draft that we implemented this past Fourth of July, discussed bicycle safety helmet that the U Services Program, SROs, are implementing this school year, and considered a request to close Adair Way, which was denied by the Committee recommending additional speed mitigation measures. In summary, the Committee addressed wide-range issues this year, from traffic safety to crosswalk projects to school safety, fire inspections, and firework regulations. The Committee continues to serve as an advisory body to the council, ensuring public safety concerns are reviewed, discussed, and addressed in partnership with staff and the community." I'm almost done, I promise. "The Committee efforts are strongest when they reflect the voices of the community, so on behalf of the Chair, we encourage anyone with public safety concerns to attend one of our meetings," as noted. "Before closing, the Chair would like to thank myself, Chief Kalanowski, for his leadership." It's weird saying that, but that's what she said. "Wendy Masters, my executive assistant for her guidance as a staff liaison, and the many residents who bring forward concerns that shape our work. On behalf of the Committee, she thanks the council for the privilege to serve our community and be happy to answer any questions if she were here, but I would answer any questions you have for me."
Thank you, Chief. Council, do you have any questions for Chief Kalanowski regarding the public safety? No? All right, well, thank you for presenting that. I want to say also too, also thank you to the people who serve on the public safety. All these commissions and committees are very important, and we're, we're very grateful for all of you that serve on this. Thank you, Chief. All right, we're moving on to item H, which is public comment. Before we start public comment, I wanted to remind the audience that this section of public comment is for items that are not agendized. So if you're here tonight to speak on a particular item, such as the Fairway Oaks Project, that is on the consent calendar, I will be asking for public comment regarding consent items, which is shortly down below where we're at now. You are welcome to still speak at public comment on something regarding Fairway Oaks. You could take your pick, but you will not be able to speak after this on a non-agendized item. So if it is a non-agendized item, it's very important that you speak now and your card, your speaker card reflects that. So Tina, would you like to please read her statement?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the city council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda.
All right, and with that, I am going to go ahead and, I am going to limit this, we have a large number, so because of that, we are going to limit to three minutes from five tonight, and just to ensure that we get through, we have a big agenda too, so. Tina, if you have any public comment for regular public comment?
Yeah, just one moment.
Hello, city council members. I'd like to bring up, we need to protect our local brick-and-mortar commercial businesses. After all, they hire local, live local, support our sales tax base, and pay business license and property taxes through the rent they pay. It wasn't intended for the flea market to have commercial out-of-towners compete against them, especially with the same names trying to represent them. By the way, the flea market, so they need to be inspected after the second setup and have a Galt business license, and they needed to have it posted so everybody knows they are not from out, that they are from out of town and they are not our local business. They appear at the flea market, the festivals, and they should have a business name, an address sign showing everybody, not to interfere with the businesses that are already here with the same name. In case, it's T-Mobile. T-Mobile is in Safemark. We have a T-Mobile coming here from 50 miles out, making misrepresentations and lying to everybody. They sign you up for a phone, and they, they tell you you have to drive all the way up to Arden Fair and pick it up. And when you have a problem, they won't take care of it. So basically, the local store, they could put the local store out of business by making false claims, and the local store already told me they're sending customers with problems to their store, which they didn't have any, any business with or anything. They'll sign you up for unwritten plan, and they lie, and they tell you they, they have this plan, and the other store, I said, "Why can't you match them?" And they said they can't match them because that plan and that, that fee does not exist. They made it up. So I complained to the flea market manager, went through the chain, and they said it's between you and, and the vendor. So far, so far, we're up to the point where they're threatening to call the police on me. So, you know, that is not a fair business practice, it's misrepresentation, and there's no backup of services. I shouldn't have to take my phone to the local store because they didn't sell it to me. So the flea market therefore needs stricter protections for the locals, and especially us seniors, who they're trying to cheat all the time. The other one is the luncheon seminars. They need to be inspected too, because some of them are honest, others are not. They come here, they sell us a plan, and then you can never contact them again. You need to focus mainly on us seniors because we don't have the money. An example is Smart cremations. They come here with a sales pitch, sign you up, no written contract, and when you try to get a hold of them, they don't answer the phone. All they do is they send you an urn, and they say when you die, you can put yourself in it. So I'm not the only one, there's other people in, in this chamber that is going through the same problem. They won't communicate with us.
Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, wrap up. Take a couple seconds to wrap up. Thank you.
That's all, Jim.
Thank, thank you for the comic relief, Mr. Lee.
Jay Vandenberg.
Hello, everyone. Jay Vandenberg, 955 Trade Post Trail. I came to talk about our Galt City Code. Ms. Rodriguez mentioned to me about how ours differs so much from other cities, and I, looking back at our city code, when it talks to neighborhood to neighborhood, it talks that it's recommended that the neighborhoods are the same, which is a meaningless, void word when it comes to the law. They can do whatever they want because a recommendation can be ignored. So you, your point was very well made. Our city code needs to be in a manner that requires the next community to match, in elevation, likeness, look, et cetera. That way, because I, like, when I bought my home, the plans, and everybody said it was going to be single-story, now it's going to be double-story, and I'll probably move because I don't need two homes looking down my back door and into my master bedroom. I've been pretty mad the last couple of weeks because of all the things that's gone on, but her point really rang true. If the code was better, it would protect all of these things that happened the last two weeks, none of them would have happened. If they may ensure that it's required, the words shall and shall not need to be prominent parts of our city code, and none of this would happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vandenberg. Repeat the name again?
Hello, my name is Joe Norris. I've been a resident of Galt for the last 24 years. For the last four years, we have had an ongoing issue with loud music and noise from a neighbor directly behind us. It is impossible to have outside gatherings and difficult to watch movies inside our own home, the music is so loud. We, as well as other neighbors, have called the Galt Police dozens of times over the last four years, yet nothing has been done about the disturbances. The police log reflects 37 calls on this resident by numerous neighbors. We were informed by Galt Police that we have to make a citizen's arrest and go to court to resolve this issue. It should not be incumbent for a citizen to confront and arrest another citizen aggravating an already volatile situation. Why aren't the police giving citations for offenses? Does the city council need to draft new ordinance for this to happen? Myself, along with my wife and two neighbors, met with councilman Matt Pratton, seeking some relief since our efforts with the police haven't worked. We were also directed to the code supervisor, who said to call him the next time this happens, and if he's available, he could come over with a decibel meter reading for loudness, but he wasn't aware of the police procedures. We feel things are just going around in circles and getting nowhere. If there isn't an ordinance, let's get one and give peace to everyone. Let's fix the problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
No more.
All right, no more regular public comments. With that, we'll move on to item I, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Pratton?
After a couple of months off, I've been busy. All right, I attended the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management meeting on Thursday, July 24th. Was not a whole lot on the agenda to report out on, other than the fact that item 7.2, Sacramento Valley Basin Wide Air Pollution Control Council, new alternate member appointment. So I am the new alternate member for the BCC Board now, so hopefully they won't need me, but I'm learning lots about that. That's about it on the air quality. On, my notes over here. On August 11th, I attended the CAST meeting, so city and schools together. It was a very productive meeting. We had, of course, our superintendents, city manager, mayor, myself, and, and our police chief was there, discussed many things. One of the things that was talked about quite a bit was the issue of scooters and electric bicycles, and, you know, how fast folks get going on those things. We know that some of these things are, some of the rules are trying to catch up to the technology, that we know they drive them too fast, we know that they're as fast as motorcycles can be, if you're buying those, those type, and there were many things discussed about it. The police department did put out a, put out a, a video right after that, that I thought was very good, so thank you, Chief, for, for putting that out. That was important to start, start the conversation. Let's see, some of the other topics, and I know, Mayor, you may want to cover some, but one of the things I thought was interesting was the attendance for Galt High is actually up slightly, so that's a positive because it's been dwindling. They're up to 2,000 for the two schools together, 2,700. The elementary school is at 3,465, so. Talked about cell phone usage at the schools and what the policies are there, and a few other items, nothing critical there. And then I also attended the LAFCO meeting, where my notes are for the LAFCO meeting. So the LAFCO meeting, not much excitement there like usual, there was, there's no big issues going on with LAFCO right now, so I don't even have the date for that in front of me, but attended that, that's a Thursday morning meeting once a month, and it's, it's well-attended, we usually get a pretty good group there, so my understanding is we've got some big topics coming up, but nothing major going on right now. One of the things that we did discuss that was new to me was that LAFCO actually takes in the, takes in the, some of the mortuaries and some of the, some of the districts for the cemeteries. So I thought that was interesting, I wasn't aware of that. So anybody who's interested in some of that information, happy to give you any that I can, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it here. Other than that, I'll leave the rest for later.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Pratton. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Nothing to report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thanks, sir. Councilmember Reed?
Good evening. I attended the CGA, the Consumers Groundwater Authority meeting on August 6th, where we appointed some new board members. We finalized the contract for our new basin manager, and then we reviewed several corrective actions that were given down by the Department of Water Resources from the state, and we're addressing those. And then so they were working on institute or launching a domestic well, a voluntary domestic well registration program for the rural areas. We're working on finalizing the five-year groundwater plan. And then I just want to reiterate how great our public works is when it comes to everything water. We're able, when we go into those meetings, our, our public works department is able to tell them exactly how much water we pumped out of the ground, exactly how much we've, we've discharged, and all those other things, when a majority of the others, because they're so rural, are unable to do that. So that's a big plus for the city in that way, we're able to represent what, what we use and what we do with it. And I think that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. I, myself, just had one thing to report on, which was the CAST meeting that Mr. Pratton mentioned. Again, for those who missed it, CAST is the Cities and Schools Together. We meet quarterly. I feel it's a very important organization, or whatever you call it, or meeting, because it's a chance for the city and the schools to get together and find out where we can assist each other in all manners. We have a standing agenda item for public safety, which I feel is very important. We discuss school safety, we discuss protocols, and, and the police share things in that meeting. So we're trying to stay ahead of, you know, what the what-ifs. And then, as Councilmember Pratton mentioned, we had a pretty good discussion about electric bicycles and things in town. Apparently, we didn't realize just how many people, apparently, on, it was like the middle school, I think it was, they said the bike racks are pretty full. It was the high, the high school, yeah. So it's starting to become very prevalent in the community, and I feel like, again, that some of the code and things regarding these devices is trying to catch up, so, but it was a good discussion. We also did discuss enrollment, and as Mr. Pratton mentioned, it was nice to see that the high school district is actually up seven students, I believe it was seven. So for the first time, we actually have more high school students now in the district than when we split, or actually when we built the second school. So since we built the second school, we've never had as many students as we have in Galt High School had the most, when one school was, now we've actually surpassed that number slightly, so we've turned a corner, I think, with enrollment, so. Other than that, it's a great meeting, I was looking forward to those, they're very informative, and so if anybody has any information, questions about stuff we talk about in there, please reach out to myself or Mr. Pratton. So that's all I have for this evening. With that, we're going to move on to item J, which is our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items 1 through 14 be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by a council member. The items this evening, well, actually, I'll go ahead and ask if there's any, if staff or council is going to pull any particular item first.
Good evening, Mayor. We would certainly like to pull item J8. We have a number of public comments on that item, and then in addition to that, we would like to provide a brief report on the status of that project prior to the public comment.
Okay, will do. Mr. Sandu?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to pull that item J10, but I would like to ask the city manager or somebody a little bit explain to the public that J, item J10.
That is the authorizing the interim city manager to execute reimbursement agreement with Elliott Homes. Just need a brief description is all, I guess you're asking for?
Yes, essentially, when we have development projects, building items that are part of the city's master plans, whether they be utilities or traffic, which are then used as the nexus for impact fees, the development is essentially building us infrastructure that we would normally build ourself with the collection of these fees. So in lieu of collecting fees from the developer, they build that, and we give them a free, a fee credit for those backbone master plan improvements. So they get fee credit, and if the amount of the improvement exceeds the fee credit, there is a reimbursement provided.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. Thank you, sir. I also wanted to make a statement just about one item. Item 7, which is the approval of the final map regarding the Summerfield at Twin Cities project, I just wanted to mention briefly, for those of you that have been following that project through the planning meeting phase, that is actually coming on an appeal to the city council, but that will be coming next month. And the item tonight, just before us, is not regarding the architecture, which is what the appeal is regarding, so this is simply a tentative map, and so this is not, they actually don't have anything to do with each other directly, so just wanted to state that for anybody who has been following that item. So with that, I will be looking for a motion-
Do we have to take public comment on any of them?
Yes. So I'm looking for a public comment regarding any items except for J8, which is the Fairway Oaks.
Thank you. My question is in regard to the- My question is in regard to the J-13 regarding levies or whatever for delinquent billings. I, for one, am a property owner. I have had some fraudulent things happen and therefore payment delays. But when the bills came in with the penalties, I paid them. So I'm a little concerned on this. How is this going to work, and who specifically do you mean is going to pay these delinquent amounts for the utilities? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Jeff Hood?
Jeff Hood, Bernal Road. Before I get into my comments on J-7, Summerfield, I just wanted to point out Councilman Reed's report on the Consumers Groundwater Authority. And this is a very important board that he's sitting on, and I, and I just want to appreciate, mention my appreciation for his serving and representing Galt on that, because it's really becoming more and more critical figuring out how the basin is going to be worked out over the years, especially with the state oversight. With that, I just, on J-7, Summerfield, there are some project conditions that were approved in 2020, and I just wanted to commend staff on recognizing the benefit of putting the water maintenance and water service under city control. Originally, it was going to be part of the HOA, but as we all know, we're on a loop system, and putting that into the purview of private property owners was not in the best interest of the city. I'll say a couple of questions. There were offsite improvements that were required, and I just wanted to ask, were these improvements, offsite improvements on property that was not part of the subdivision? And I don't know if someone can answer that question for me?
I'll look to the city manager to answer your question once your comment's over, Mr. Hood. Go ahead and continue with your questions.
Okay. My other question was, the improvements also required were sidewalks, and these sidewalks just dead end to unimproved areas. There's other items on the agenda tonight that say that that's a danger, that it's not safe to have sidewalks that don't connect with other sidewalks. These at Summerfield just stop. So were these sidewalks removed from the, the final map? That's, those are my questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hood. Staff, do we have any?
So as it pertains to Summerfield, yes, all of the offsite improvements, such as the turnpocket components, those are all part of the offsite improvement plans that they will have to construct before we accept their improvements.
Okay. And the sidewalks, are they removed as well?
These, all the sidewalks that are on the improvement plans and part of the conditions of approval, those are also part of the improvement plans.
Is that unsafe?
It's all part of the building, the facilities.
Mr. Hood, that's, thank you.
All right.
No more public comment.
With that, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the following items. J-1, which is receiving file warrants for a period ending August 6th, 2025. Item 2, which is revised minutes of July 15th, regular city council meeting and the special meeting from August 5th. Item 3 is authorization to purchase 2026 ATP Pro 300C Office Command Trailer. Item 4 is the award of analytic laboratory testing of potable water, potable drinking water and wastewater compliance samples. Item 5 is going to be the award of task order and related budget adjustments for consultant services to prepare the wastewater treatment plant capacity analysis. Item 6 is going to be the award of task order for consultant services to prepare recycled water feasibility study, CIP 523A. Item 7, which is the approval of the final map subdivision improvement agreement for Summerfield at Twin Cities, Unit 1. Item 9, the ordinance of the city council of Galt authorizing the levy of special taxes in a community facilities district, including certain annexation territory identified as annexation number 10, Summerfield into the City of Galt Facilities District 2020-1. Item J-10, authorizing the interim city manager to execute reimbursement agreement with Elliot Holmes. Item 11, the naming of two city parks located in the Liberty Ranch subdivision and one in the Elliot Ranch subdivision. Item 12 is the approval of the Galt Police Officers Association's side letter, the Galt Police Department civilian associates' side letter and personnel manual, which includes updated health benefits and enhanced longevity benefits. Item 13 is a notice of intent to levy Galt Delinquent Utilities, Galt Delinquent Citations for fiscal year 2526. And lastly, item 14, which is the Office of Traffic Safety Grant 2025 Award Acceptance. I have a motion to approve those items.
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Items approved 5-0. We will now move on to item J-8. That item is the approval of the final map and subdivision improvement agreement for Fairway Oaks and authorization of related actions. But before we move on to that, I need to read a statement. So this particular item will require me to recuse myself from participating in this as my personal residence is near the Fairway Oaks, Fairway Oaks subject property, and based on this, I have a potential conflict of interest, and I will recuse myself from that item. So Council, Vice Mayor Sandu will be taking over this section of the meeting, and if you guys can please notify me when this item is finished, and I can return in the chambers. So with that, Mr. Sandu, you can take over on item 8.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We can give a minute to let him move out from the room. All right. Good evening, everyone. Now I'm going to take over because mayor have a conflict of interest on this agenda item. This agenda item, approval of final map subdivision improvement agreement for Fairway Oaks and authorize of related action. And there's a recommended action, approve the final map for Fairway Oaks subdivision, authorize the filing and recordation, authorize the interim city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement, SIA and K, Holmes, North California, and filing and recordation. Number three, authorize the city engineer to set the public parcel easement and right-of-way offer for dedication of final map following satisfactory completion of related improvement. Number four, authorize the public work director to issue and amend consultant task order for the Fairway Oaks subdivision inspection project management up to the limit calculation and fees. Thank you for everybody. I know for this agenda item, I think all the residents most likely on this agenda item. Be patient. We're going to go step by step. At first, I'm going to let the staff to explain about this agenda item. Then I will ask the council if they have any comment, then we'll go back to the public comment, and then we can go back to make a decision with the, if we can make a decision tonight with it. So now I will ask the staff to vote this agenda item. Chris, who will be?
Good evening, members of council. Amy Mendez, Assistant City Manager. I am going to cover one portion of the agenda item this evening related to Fairway Oaks, which has to do with the subdivision improvement agreement. Staff is recommending a modification to the subdivision improvement agreement as part of tonight's item before discussion. As most of you are aware, the approved vesting tentative subdivision map for the Fairway Oaks project was approved showing an offsite improvement of a sidewalk along the northern edge of the Cornell Road property. This is shown on page TM-5 of the approved vesting tentative subdivision map, which shown here on this exhibit. This would be Section AA and Section BB of the proposed offsite Cornell Road street Just for clarification, the vesting tentative subdivision map and the final map only define the land to be subdivided, the tract itself within the development, and onsite improvements, including streets within the tract. The vesting tentative subdivision map and the final map do not define offsite improvements such as the sidewalk along Cornell Road, although it is included as an exhibit as part of the vesting tentative subdivision map. It is not part of that approval as related to the vesting tentative subdivision map. The offsite improvements, such as the sidewalk, are defined and governed by the subdivision improvement agreement, which commits the subdivider, in this case, the developer, to ensure construction of required offsite improvements, which the subdivision improvement agreement is part of tonight's agenda item related to the Fairway Oaks project. For tonight's consideration, the parties, both the city and the developer, have agreed to construct the offsite sidewalk improvement on the north side of Cornell Road. And so this is a modification from the subdivision improvement agreement that is before you this evening, so that is what's being requested. The developer has agreed to this and will provide the modifications to the improvement plans that have been approved. To ensure that the offsite sidewalk improvements on Cornell Road are constructed as intended, staff recommends clarifying, a clarifying amendment as part of the subdivision improvement So tonight, the subdivision improvement agreement, the SIA, is in front of you. It's part of your package. Staff recommends adding the following new sentence to the end of recital B in the draft SIA. Essentially, we are asking to add, for clarity and the avoidance of doubt, the required improvements include, among other things, the offsite sidewalk improvements on Cornell Road depicted on TM-5 of the tentative subdivision map, regardless of their omission from the city-approved, city-approved improvement plans or final map. So essentially, as part of the agreement tonight, as part of the item tonight, we're asking that the item be approved as recommended with a modification to the subdivision improvement agreement to ensure that the Cornell Road sidewalk is included as part of the offsite improvement that would be constructed by the developer. Just to clarify before there is any discussion on this item, we do want to make sure that the public understands that the closure of Cornell Road is not part of this item. And so the discussion this evening is related to the final map approval and the subdivision improvement agreement and the associated approvals as part of that item. At a later date, if there is discussion on modifying Cornell Road, closing Cornell Road, or making any modifications to Cornell Road, that will be brought back to Planning Commission and City Council, and we will also be connecting with all of the impacted property owners. So with that, we are open for questions and any discussion that council would like to take from the public or from staff.
Thank you, Amy. Council, do you guys want to make any comment before the public comment, or otherwise I'm going to tell the public comment?
I think the public wants to be heard on this, so let's listen to them.
All right. Tina, how many public comment we have?
13.
All right. Then go ahead.
Liz Hagland?
Liz Hagland? Can we go back to the amendment on the, on the slides? So my whole speech just changed, which is probably a good thing. I'm sure it's much shorter. I guess now I have just a few questions. Are you adopting the final map as it's shown on the agenda? I understand you're amending the agreement. Or are you adopting the approved tentative map as, tonight, as the final map? Because what's on the agenda is missing those pages that shows the sidewalk. So I'm not sure if you're adopting an amended final map, which I'm not quite sure you can do, but, so I have those questions, but I think the Creekside folks that are here, this is really good news for us, and I want to thank council, however you got here. Thank staff. But I do have those questions. And if, can we go to the amendment itself?
She's got to do it from the remote.
It's what you're adding to the agreement? There you go. Okay. So really, I just have those questions. I don't need my three minutes, because I was going to tell you how important the sidewalks are for safety, for everything else. But anyway, now I just have those questions on what you're actually adopting tonight or approving tonight on the final map, because the one on the agenda is missing those sidewalk pages. I understand you are amending the agreement. So anyway.
Chris, could you maybe explain what's on the amendment?
Basically, my response would be that the final map that's being requested, the material in the package accommodates the final map requirements. I think the item that is being requested from most of the public is being addressed through the subdivision improvement agreement.
Thank you.
Tom Hagland?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, and I appreciate, at this point, the modification that is apparently being made. But as you might expect, typically, this is a time for us to provide comment. There isn't a lot of back and forth, but we are in a little bit different circumstance here tonight. I, I hope you'll provide me just a slight bit of latitude. As I read the amendment there, which states, "For clarity and the avoidance of doubt, the required improvements include, among other things, the offsite sidewalk improvements on Cornell Road depicted on page TM-5 of the tentative subdivision map, regardless of their omission from the city-approved improvement plans or final map." Just a couple of clarifications. When it says tentative subdivision map, you're referring to the vesting tentative subdivision map, I presume. Okay. So affirmative there. And I guess I, in order to help a lot of folks that have come to me on this issue and indeed to help me, it's my understanding in reading this amendment that if your council approves this tonight, there will be the planned sidewalk constructed on Cornell Road consistent with how it appears on sheet TM-5 of the vesting tentative subdivision map. Is that correct? Correct, Chris?
Yeah.
That's correct. Okay. Okay. I think that that would be fine. I think that, I'm assuming then that there will be an amendment made upon a council motion to include this as, as part of that. And I think that it substantially changes my comments tonight. And I, if you do this and follow through, I think that it really underscores the public process that was completed in 2020 when I was your city manager and Chris was your community development director, in which vesting tentative map for Fairway Oaks was approved. And it gets us back to a much more even keel on being able to demonstrate to the public that they can have faith in, in a public process like that. Thank you for the clarifications.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. Tina, the next.
Chris Aguirre.
I have no other comment.
Thank you. The next.
Good evening. As the speakers that came, or the commenters that came right before me, I am going to change my comments, and I'm glad to hear that our voices are being heard and that we are going to, as for what I can tell, we're going to stick to the original plan. That includes the sidewalk on Cornell, because my concerns, they're still there, the safety for my neighborhood of Creekside. And I'm just seeing all, you know, all the pedestrians that walk around, all the strollers that are in, and so that means those kids are going to grow up in a few years. Once Fair Oaks is open for business, they'll be walking to the bus stop and everything like that. So the only concern that I have is, you know, there's some language that has left things open in the future. And this was from an email that came from assistant city manager. And that is that no decision is being made at this time to close Cornell Road, at this time to close Cornell Road. So when I hear things like that, I just get worried that maybe it's being left open in the future, and I'm hoping that we're closing that right now, right here, today. So whatever vote happens today, I'm taking it to mean that we are going to keep that sidewalk on Cornell and keep it open and not even be thinking about possibly closing it in the future. That's how I'm taking this. And if that doesn't happen, then of course, it'll probably be a lot more of us when we, if it comes back. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Mary Hood, Bernal Road. Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council members. So I know that we've all prepared statements, and so I'm going to go ahead and read what I wrote, because it has put us all in a really not-good place to have to fight for what is right. And it has pitted side against side, which is unfair for the city to do. I've been a resident of this city for 32 years, and so I have a vested interest in the vesting the map. So bear with me, because this reflects where we came to today, to be here. So we teach our children to follow the laws, stop at stop signs, go to the speed limit, vote to make a change, or petition lawmakers to have your voice heard. Yet, we didn't do that same thing in this council and our city officials. They didn't abide by the tenants that we teach our children to do the right thing and follow the law. It took a long battle and a long fight. I'm still not sure we're over this. So what if we all decided to forget the rules and regulations? Eh, don't worry, you're just learning to drive. If there aren't any cars at the intersection, you don't have to stop. Speed limits are just a suggestion on how fast we should go. Eh, don't worry, it's okay if you have a drink, you're fine, drive home. What would happen if we all decided rules aren't for us, or rather, rules only apply to people who disagree with us? Hmm. So in society today, exemptions are me, as in society, the exemptions being made for one group against another have been right here in gold. And it's been a really stressful place to be, where we have to stand up to do what's right. We have laws for a reason. The subdivision has been planned for over 30 years, not this particular developer, but we've known plans that Cornell Road was going to be open for 30 years. And for people to say, no, it wasn't, we didn't know, all of that, that's actually an untruth. So, thank you for listening to those of us, and you need to remember, please, one group of citizens isn't more important than another. You represent all of us. And it's been a really interesting time to watch this happen. So basically, shouldn't be a decision wavering on opening Cornell Road, sidewalks go in, it's open. I understand that there may be something coming back about closing it later on, but the impact to our subdivision will be tremendous. There's a potential on Ranch Road, having 300 cars per day. Think about Cost Road, those people using Ranch Road to go all the way down to 99. So we aren't comparing apples to oranges here. Our subdivision is large, Cornell Road is small. So, safety matters for all citizens. Do the right thing. You need to open the road, use the vesting tentative map, not close Cornell Road. And if there are other decisions to be made in the future, thank you for bringing it back to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Jeff Hood, same address as Mary Hood. I just wanted to thank, or kind of echo a lot of Tom's Haglund's comments and Liz's comments regarding the change in the edit to the improvement map. As a former department director to California City, I understand the challenges that staff faces, as well as councils. Department heads and managers change, so do council members. Information's not always passed along to successors, yet they're the ones held accountable because they represent the city, as did their predecessors. And that's when the surprises emerge. And where I work, that was called a turd. And this project dropped a few of them. I've been studying a lot of documents in this, and I appreciate the amendment, but one of the things that was in the vesting tentative map, it was condition B17, which stated that new right-of-way must be obtained even if eminent domain was required. That's what the council voted for in 2020. And there was a recent meeting, informational meeting, where the decision of removing the sidewalk from the map was put on a former community development director. And I talked to him recently, and he said it was removed because the staff and the staff felt that the council didn't have the stomach to go far with eminent domain if needed to complete the sidewalk on Cornell. So to me, clearly a significant change if it were not to go through. One of the other questions I had is, there's a traffic study that's being revised currently to study the closure of Cornell Road and the impacts of that. The SAFR report says there are no alternatives to the final map, but clearly, if there's a study of change in traffic patterns, to me, that sounds like an alternative. So I would ask you, the U-Direct staff, to cease any further traffic studies related to Cornell Road closure, and because it's, that would be considered an alternate to the tentative map, and which hasn't been disclosed. So a lot of my really good stuff, I'm going to hold it. But I know this is simply a recommendation right now from staff to adopt this. And I would like to see that, you know, the conditions of B17, would the eminent domain be included in that, to make sure that it gets done. I would hope that if the council is inclined not to vote for this amendment, that you delay action on this, because it's kind of disarmed us for right now. And I would just hate to see us having an expectation of accomplishing something only to have it yanked out from under us. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Jeff.
I feel left out. I didn't have anything written down. I'm going to speak from the heart. I'm looking at the recommended edit to the SIA. Avoidance of doubt, the required improvements include, among other things. What are the other things? What's not included there? What don't we know about? We're glad the sidewalk's going in, but I got a feeling the other things happen to be an EVA. And I want to remind you of Santa Rosa, Maui, Paradise, Pacific Palisades, and Eaton. I have a wife, I have five children, five grandchildren, and the points of exit that are going to happen if Cornell Road does not become a through road, which is in the master plan, we're going to have a problem. Your study says the average household has two cars. As I walk around Creekside with my wife and my dog every morning, every house has four to five cars. How many cars are going to be in the other half of the subdivision where Fairway Oaks is going in? Kids can't afford to move out anymore. They stay home with mom and dad. What about the people on Cost Road? The people between Cost Road and St. Christopher's Church, all those streets, this side of the railroad tracks? How are they going to get out? You guys ever been out on Lincoln Way when there's a crash on Highway 99? And the traffic impact that happens out there? Now we're going to funnel them through Creekside and through Fairway Oaks, and by golly, you better have your kids on a leash and not let them get hit. We had a gentleman here two weeks ago, he's got two autistic kids. We got a problem. And I don't know who made a deal with the devil, but I got a feeling that the other things happens to be an EVA. I've had my say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul.
Now, Veng.
New Veng. Don't make these for short people. All right. Good evening, Vice Mayor Sandu and council members. My name is New Veng, and I live in the Creekside neighborhood. I'm here tonight because the Fairway Oaks project will reshape our neighborhoods, and the community deserves a fair and complete process before the approval of the final map. Closing Cornell Road, I know that's not being considered tonight, but does have a ripple effect and impact on this, and it's just not aligned on a map. It packs hundreds of families, and every driver who uses Glendale, Cornell, and Ranch Road. This project has been the city's general plan for decades, and if Cornell was always meant to be an access point, why weren't there improvements made to ensure that it could safely handle traffic? Instead, safety is now being used as an excuse to potentially close Cornell and push the burden onto other neighborhoods. This is poor planning, and our families should not pay for it. We all want growth that makes our city stronger, but growth cannot come at the expense of safety, transparency, and public trust. Approving this project now will leave too many questions unanswered. How will emergency vehicles get through in time? What traffic calming measures will be deployed to mitigate safety concerns? How will children walk or bike to school safely? The people who live here every day deserve to know how these issues will be solved before the final map is approved. I urge you to hold off on approving until the traffic study is complete, results are shared, and a real plan is in place. By taking this step, you shall resonate that their voice matters, that safety comes first, and that the city is committed to making decisions with the full picture in view. This is your chance to demonstrate leadership that prioritized safety over convenience and fairness over speed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carol Smith, and I live on Cornell Road. Let me just say first and foremost that I don't have any ill feelings for anyone in any neighborhood. I don't harbor an attitude or judgment on anyone. It's just not a healthy way to live. So over 20 years ago, I'm just going to go ahead and speak on this if I can, the lady was allowed to do so, and I'm just going to go ahead and speak on it if you don't mind, sir. This is regarding safety on Cornell Road. Over 20 years ago, a few of my neighbors, the Templetons and the late Charlotte Giddens, established neighborhood watch. Officer Hutchins came out, and she signed us up for the program and gave us the ropes on what to do. 20 years ago, a, I'm going to try not to let my emotions get the best of me tonight. So y'all please excuse me. I've encountered special needs children, verbal and nonverbal. I intervened for them safety-wise. I didn't know who the little children were, it didn't matter, because the neighbors are not just considered Cornell neighbors. We are all neighbors. The homes in Creekside, Glendale, we're all neighbors. And we on Bernal and Cornell Road, we watch out for everyone, all children, whether they be walking, riding, on scooters. We watch out for everyone, because that's what we should do just as human beings, and because we want to, at least I know, I want to. My husband and another one of my neighbors have ushered livestock down our street, back to their, to its prospective address. Ms. Blivins, Blivins and my husband Gilbert, got a cow back to where it belonged. So situations such as that, yes, safety is an issue. Safety is the most important issue, and it does involve all of us. Cornell Road will still be a narrow road, and then the issue of the sidewalks on the north side of the street, that was a big surprise. It is here again, in my opinion, allowing the developer to do what they want to do to us. As sidewalks on the north side of the road, and not on the south side of the road, aesthetically, it's, I'll say it's different. I won't say it's never happened, but I don't know, but it is different. So I ask that the city council, mayor, consider carefully your choice to close.
Time is over.
Can I just wrap, do I wrap up, please?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. To keep Cornell closed. It's never been opened. My home is 100 years old. The road has never been opened. So that's all I have to say. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening. So now that the city is deciding to proceed with the sidewalk on the north side of Cornell Road, I would like them to pause for a moment and consider all the other safety concerns I've brought to their attention, because one sidewalk on the side of the road, being a 20-foot road, doesn't resolve all the issues I've spoke about, wrote about previously with you guys. I've spoke about the EVA ramp that serves Ebony Orchid Road in Fairway Oaks. Once again, the 20-foot wide road, there's mailboxes and other conflicts with that narrow of a road, and where the mailboxes actually are scheduled to live, the fact that there's no lighting as far as street lighting. And where would these sidewalks go? Because I believe these sidewalks going in on either side of the road are in direct conflict with the last are in direct conflict with the Laffco agreement in 2020 that allowed current residents to maintain the current land use of their properties. This would be robbing their whole frontages. So I would please appreciate you look into the legality of that. Also, the concern about Cornell Road being some type of mitigation for traffic. A lot of people discuss the issues with Lincoln Road currently. Where does Cornell Road lead? Lincoln Road. So this doesn't really resolve anything. And I feel like the city is opening the residence on Cornell Road up to much more safety issues for an unnoticed amount of traffic flow on other roads such as Ranch Road and Creekside. Please address these issues before opening Cornell Road if you are choosing to move forward with that. Maybe more stop signs need to be added. Maybe things do need to be slowed down on Lincoln Road. But I think if we're gonna increase the traffic flow of Cornell Road, you should probably look into addressing the intersection that enters Lincoln as well. And where's that sidewalk gonna go? Where does it go from Cornell Road? There's no sidewalks north or south of Cornell Road currently. So if you're gonna once again deliver pedestrians into an unsafe location, go ahead, put them in, drop them off right on Lincoln Road. People are going 50 miles an hour. People are already complaining about it. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Gilbert Smith.
Good afternoon. My name's Gilbert Smith, and I live on Cornell Road. Most of what I have to say have already been said, but I have to speak on this. One gentleman loved to throw around the word eminent domain. Well, pretty much the only eminent domain that can be taken is on Cornell Road. Not Burnell, not Creekside, not the new development going in. Why we have to always be doing, giving up property we already have? So we're gonna give, just spread the wealth. Take some property away from Creekside. Take some away from the developer. We've given enough. I already can't park in front of my home. You know? Yeah, I got an acre, but that's my business. That's my property. You know? That's all shared wealth. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dixie Hughes.
My name is Dixie Hughes, and I've lived on Ranch Road for 23 years. This is an emotional night. Mrs. Hood, thank you for your comments. I share them. I wanted to have a little latitude tonight, because Cornell Road has been planned to be a thorough street for 40 years. That's a fact. The proposed closure of Cornell Road is a public safety issue, because Ranch Road will be the only exit road to Lower Sacramento Road. Chase Drive loops around internally. There's no exit. Ranch Road already has a lot of traffic. Cornell Road needs to be kept open, as previously agreed, on the vesting tentative map. And we must place our community public safety above emotional needs, above the desire of Cornell Road residents trying to close this public road that's always been planned to be a thorough street for 40 years. Trying to close this public road to thorough traffic in the future, whether by using an EVA gate, whether by using the excuse of the absence of sidewalks, whether by using poor street lighting, or whether by using an email from the city to all Cornell Road residents that indicates to them a through access will be blocked in the future. I repeat, indicating to them a through access will be blocked in the future is lacking sound reasoning. Think logically. Two large subdivisions with several hundred cars per day driving on Ranch Road that have only one exit road on Ranch Road through to Lower Sacramento Road removes both our public safety and our reasonable escape routes. Please keep Cornell Road open.
Thank you.
Dale Templeton.
Thank you for listening. I'm Dale Templeton, 10601 Cornell Road. And Vice Mayor Sandu, I hope you remember in 2020, you made a promise that you would not be changing anything as we're are living on Cornell Road other than, you know, being part of the city and paying extra taxes. So I hope that you reconsidered that. You also know that Cornell Road has been there for about 100 years. It wasn't in anybody's plan until somebody drew it into one. And that plan, that plan can be used by simply cutting it off at the end, and you can make an EVA exit out of that EV exit on it. Take the fire and right down to the end, open up a gate that's locked, and they can exit out on the freeway. And also, you'd have to cover probably Burnell. That should be an EV exit there, too. But if you haven't, don't have a chain link on there, you're gonna have cars trying to get out there when the police and the fire are trying to get in. And what you have is a bunch of people that are going nowhere. So one thing that you don't know, probably, is that that's all private property. If you look, 17 people is all that served on that road. And we have a... All of our deeds go out to the center of the road, essentially. So if you want that, you need to go and buy it. It's a road that's about 1,300 by 50 feet wide. And pay the passage on it, because it's not going to be handy for us to give up our property for nothing, have a stripper hazard out in front of my house. I don't need a sidewalk out there to run over every day. And quite frankly, if you have kids that are gonna get out there, take good care of your kids. Because I have been a firefighter in Sacramento, and I'll tell you right now that they don't care about sidewalks or anything else. They'll go anywhere and across streets. So it's not our responsibility to take care of your kids, but it is yours. And with that, I hope that you'll reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Seneros.
Hello, fellow council members. My name is Laura. I'm a Creekside resident. So I just wanna thank you. I just wanna let you know the importance of this sidewalk in the future, once the residents do move in into Fairway Oaks. I'm sure the children will need to catch the bus on Lincoln Way, just the way my kids do, do at the moment at the corner of Ranch and Lincoln Road. And we do have a lot of sidewalks that just dead end anywhere. St. Christopher's across the street, you know, has a sidewalk that starts and stops just during, along that property. So I feel like Galt is sort of used to those. And I know a lot of the focus has been on the traffic, and we don't want all these extra cars on our roads. But think about the people. My kids do have to cross, across Ranch Road twice a day to and from the bus. City of Galt, thank you for doing what's right. Keep, I ask you to keep all the roads open, keep the sidewalks, as was always the plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Albert.
Good evening, council members. I'm Stephanie Albert. I live on Cornell Road. I've been there almost 20 years. So the question I have is one for clarification, is to make sure that the sidewalk that we just learned about that's gonna be on the north side, is that going to go all the way down from the Fairway Oaks development to the end of Lower Sacramento? Or is it just going to be in front of the Fairway Oaks development? Because that was what we were told. Can anyone answer that?
Can anyone answer that?
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
If the sidewalk isn't gonna go all the way down from Fairway Oaks development down to Lower Sacramento Road? And not just in front of the Fairway Oaks development? Because that would be just leading to two portions, the ones that's to the left of our property and further down. So just is the sidewalk going all the way down, Cornell Road?
Yeah, so the, I shown in the cross-section, the intent was it for it to basically connect the Fairway subdivision all the way through to Lower Sac or Lincoln.
Okay. Thank you. My other comment is to advocate for single-story homes for existing residents. I know we have a lot of development here in Galt. So for those homes that are backed up to existing residents, we want to ensure that they're only single-story homes that are installed on those properties. So that's my comment to the council and the planning commission. My other comment is that when we built our house in '07, Cornell Road was not supposed to be open. So the truth varies with everybody's opinion. And Cornell Road residents don't know that Cornell Road was supposed to be open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pete Leisha.
Good evening. Thank you, council. Thank you, members. I just wanted to say I've lived in Creekside for 10 years. And I was pretty one-sided when I first heard about the development being built. And really, for me, I wasn't looking out, I guess, for the safety of everybody. I was thinking just to myself, because I don't have any children living at the home right now. But it was brought to my attention, hey, they were gonna open up Ranch Road. And I'm thinking, okay. Then all of a sudden, I hear they're opening up Chase, which isn't gonna be a big one, but it is another entrance into the Creekside area. And I sat on calls and listened, and I probably tried to argue the point that, hey, living in Creekside, we only had one in and out for the 10 years I've been living there, and it seems to be fine. And it was brought to my attention that, yeah, that's what it is, but for safety reasons, it's been brought up that you do not have enough exits going in and out of your development. And I had to think about that for a while, and I really came to realization that they're correct. If there was something going on, there isn't enough exits to get in and out. And I, I understand, you know, where the people on Cornell are feeling right now that, hey, Cornell was never an open road. Well, Ranch was never an open road. Chase was never an open road. They're opening these roads for the safety of our children and other people. So today, I believe in what they're trying to do and for the safety of everybody and the children that are out there. And I, I truly support keeping Cornell open, and hopefully, the city does the same, because it's all about safety at the end of the day. And if that's what it is, let's make sure we're safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more comments.
All right, no more public comment. Now I'm going to close the public comment. And now we're gonna go back to the council. Any council member wants to make any comment on this agenda item?
Yes, I would, I would, I think, to be fair and clear, so everybody in this room can get the word out, the sidewalk that's being talked about is not your sidewalk like in Ranch Road. This is going to be kind of like the path that's down there by the creek. This is not a full, safe sidewalk. It never was. It was never planned that way. So the expectations that I think are in this room for this fancy sidewalk are not there. There are no lights planned. There never was. The safety on Cornell is not going to be all of a sudden perfect because of this pathway that is going to go there. So I just wanna help the expectations in the room. That this doesn't solve very many safety issues with pedestrians on Cornell, at all, in my opinion. So I agree with the majority of the speakers that safety is the number one. Right now, council is being faced, and staff is being faced, with weighing out what is safe and what is not, or which is better, I guess. And I do want to address a couple of things as well. Because I, I, and I guess I'm gonna be emotional over this, too. I have no way in over there, other than that I've talked with a lot of you. A lot of you have emailed. There's been a lot of discussion. The unfortunate thing is, is that one of the speakers was correct, that somehow the two neighborhoods got pitted against each other. Unfortunately, that was not done by staff. It was not done by council. It was done by you guys. So I'm gonna play mom here really quick, and maybe I get recalled or not revoted in. But the safety of Cornell became a discussion about that, that sidewalk got taken out before Cornell people even were talking about it. It was taken out almost immediately after 2022 without anyone else talking about, anyone from Cornell, to be clear, saying, don't do this to us. That's not what happened. I don't know who's feeding that, but that's not what happened. The safety of Cornell, because it is not going to be a fully improved road, and it never was planned for that, the concern was that decision to allow pedestrians to be walking down an unimproved road. But I think what happened is people tried to come up with reasonings, find an enemy to fight their side. I don't think it was intentional, but it happened. But it didn't happen up here. It did not happen from the city. It happened from you guys. 100%. And it's frustrating sitting up here and listening to all the sides. You all have legitimate reasoning for wanting what you want. 100%, I get that. But the one thing you don't have a legitimate reason for is pitting each other against each other. You all have safety concerns. 100%, we all recognize this. I think I can speak for everybody. We recognize the safety concerns regardless of what happens with this development. 100%. The other thing, you know, we're not addressing the opening to closing of Cornell. That's not what's on the agenda today. It's not on that map. It does not have anything to do. I'd be happy to talk to anybody about the things that I, the research and the hundreds of pages and newspaper articles and everything that I've done on that. And I will just say one thing. Cornell Road, back in the, 40 years ago, when this was planned, was planned that Cornell Road's properties would be split and a mini- Road's properties would be split and a mini subdivision would be basically created in there, which would have prompted a fully developed street, thereby getting you your sidewalk. That's the real history here. That didn't happen. You have people who, you know, are living there and, and did their thing, and they own, and Mr. Templeton is correct. The other things that are, um, also correct is that unfortunately for Cornell, but happily for Ranch, is that there is a right of way down there. So eminent domain, it, it just really irritates me that we throw that word out here because it is so insensitive for what's happening here. It has nothing to do with the stomach of this council or the council before us. I don't know where that rumors are coming in either. I just hope that we all can truly think about the safety of the community at large here, at large, because that's what we're going to do. From there, um, again, I do want everyone to realize about that sidewalk, it is not the save-all and catch-all for everything at all. So with that, um, I, I think I've said my piece, and everyone's probably done, and chief, I may need an escort out when we go.
All right, anybody else?
Yeah, I'll comment. Whew. All right, so back in '22, when this, uh, came to planning commission, I was sitting on planning commission. I was, turns out, I was the one that made the motion to continue this, uh, map plan. So I had some skin in the game, and, and I was very interested in what had happened to some of these pieces. So I just wanna thank Chris and Amy for doing their due diligence and putting together, uh, this recommendation. I'm gonna support it, and, uh, that's where I'm gonna move on.
Thank you. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, sir. Uh, first, I wanna thank all the, um, everyone in the community, right, that reached out to all of us. Because if you don't reach out to us, we, a lot of times, don't know, uh, where everyone sits. Like, we got more emails in the last 48 hours probably than the newer council have got since we got elected, all those months put together. So it is good for us to hear your feedback, as opposed to a lot of other meetings where we don't. And I tried to get back to everyone that did email me. If I didn't, I'm sorry. I just got a lot of emails. Anybody that's been, that's followed my campaign at all, I am 100% behind public safety. If that include, if that's talking about sidewalks, if it's talking about access for our public safety personnel, but, right? Like council member Rodriguez said, Cornell Road is not in the discussion today. So that is gonna be addressed at a future time, at a future meeting, and we're gonna do it the right way by bringing it in front of all of you and doing it according to the way the law makes us do it. Other than that, I can't really say any more than Bonnie or Matt already said. Just it, I appreciate all your guys' input, and I did read every single one of your guys' emails that came in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank you, every one of the speaker, and they are all respected in this community. It's no matter they live in Creekside, it's no matter they live in Cornell. If they remember that, uh, most respect to Mr. Templeton, what he mentioned, that's right. Back in 2020, when this place we make in the city, and this all Cornwall people, they does not wanna come to the city. And there is a reason. City have a more restriction than county. And there was a five council, and I'm the only one council here, because the other one was Sean Farmer, he was not, that is conflict of interest. And that time, there are two council member, they have a conflict of interest, Jay Beddenberg and Sean Farmer. And they left only three council member, myself, Mr. Papano, and Rachel Lizano. In order to bring this into the city, they need three vote. And all these, and I postponed two time, I think Chris was on the planning commission. The reason I, I wanna give every opportunity on Cornwall people, I almost made, if I not 100%, 80%. And that time is on the record, I personally asked all my council member and the staff, I said, whatever they're doing, because on that area, there is lot of trailer out there, there's lot on the city code you can. And I promised them, and I still stand by promise, even I'm a one council, even I'm not a majority, but I know, Ms., uh, Farmer, he know that, I will stand. If there is anybody violated from code enforcement, according to, I will stand for these people. But that time, there was, the reason I supporting this, because that time, there was a tentative map. And tentative map, you cannot change unless you have the public process. And I'm telling, I'm not hate what happened, but there was, the reason on the report is confusing everybody. Cause during that time, there is some authority director usually have it. But that time, community development director, public work director, and city manager, they decide to change something on the report without public, and that a public process. Because then the, this is a map. And that's why we are trying to correct it. If, if we are not following the Westing map, then we are not following whatever we decide in 2020, and whatever we decide in a planning commission in 2022. So closing that road or opening that road, I don't, this meeting is not that. We always, and personally, I'm, I'm very advocate on the policy, on the safety, and I also very much on the transparency. If anything changes, should we come to the public process? So that was the reason I'm supporting that. That's one of the reason the staff bringing back, match the tentative Westing back to the, the map. And then also, you know, it was not fair with the developer too. When they bought that property, it was already changed, that the, the reason they bought the property. So staff did a very good job, and I'm thank you for the developer, they was agree, whatever we decide on 2022 or 2020. And we like to move that project forward. I know there's construction is, nobody like construction. There is construction where I live, I don't like either, but sometimes we have to live with it. So again, I would like to thank you, everybody's comment from my heart. Everybody comment is reasonable. We all have a kids, we all have a grandkids, we all wants to be, and we all wants, when we reach a, anything emergency comes, we will go somewhere in the safe. And thank you again, thank you for everybody to come tonight, and even last couple times in the last meeting. Thank you. Council member or staff, anyone wanna add anything in this agenda item? If it's not, then I would like to looking a motion to approve this agenda item, J8, bid the amendment for clarity and avoidance of doubt and required improvement include, among other things, the offside walk improvement or Cornell Road, decided on the page TM5 of the tentative subdivision map, regardless of their omission from the city approved improvement plan or final map. May have a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve, as Redd.
Is moved by Matt Pratton, he's second.
I'll second it.
A second by Mr. Reed. Madam Clerk may have a.
Councilmember Pratton.
Please to approve that agenda item.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion carry with four to zero. Thank you again, thank you for everybody come tonight for the council.
Can somebody tell Ms.?
I'm texting him right now.
Farmer.
See if he looks at his texts, bud.
No.
He's standing right there. He's, he's gonna see all the people leaving, and he's gonna know that he.
Well, the TV's on out there too. Yeah, he was listening.
Then is he technically recusing himself if he's just going into the other room and watching it all on TV?
What we don't know doesn't hurt us. I went to the restroom, though, he was out there.
Come on down. You're the next contestant on the press program. Intend to start what right away? Me? No, no. You get to take over on item K.
All right. Now that all the excitement's over.
You missed it.
I didn't miss it. All right, uh, we are gonna pick up on item K here, scheduled matters and notice of public hearing, do we have any this evening?
None this evening.
All right, we'll move on to item L, a regular calendar. The first item's gonna be the city's treasury report. Treasury report for a period ending 2025, Mr. Farrell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Um, tonight you have the treasurer's report ending, ending June of 2025. Um, before I, before I get to that, as I usually and always do, I always talk about unemployment and housing here, here, uh, with the nine-five-six-three-two zip code. So first, let me talk about unemployment. According to EDD, um, we have a total of 12,800 in the labor force. And with that, there are 12,100 who are employed, which, uh, means there's 700 unemployed. That comes out to a rate of about 5.4%. Um, countywide, how we rate countywide, the countywide is 5.6%. So for, for the month of June, we're just slightly below the, the countywide rate. Now, I'll switch to housing, and I, I, for, and I wanna cover the month of July that just recently passed. And these numbers were kinda surprising to me, but it, they are what they are. Um, so I'm gonna talk about medians, and the me, there were a total of 17 homes are sold with the nine-five-six-three, uh, two zip code. The median listing price of those homes, $580,000. The actual sell or closed price, the median, was 631,000. So that was significantly higher. That, I was surprised at that too. That was significantly higher. So in month of July, we, um, people who closed homes received a, a premium. Now, for the first two months in August, just, uh, I mean, just these past, last, last week and the week prior, the median price was $580,000. That was the list. The closed was 585,000. So people are still paying a slight, a slight premium. That comes down to about $314, uh, dollars per, per square foot. So if you're trying to value your home, that's pretty much what you're looking at these days. So moving on to the treasurer's report ending of June of 2025. Uh, everyone always wants to talk about interest rates. And for this past fiscal year, so from July 2024 through June 2025, the, we all know the interest rates were, you know, somewhat, somewhat high, in the fact from, from investing taxpayer money for you, I was able to go out and get like, say, rates of, say, 5%, okay? Which was, you know, really good. And what I'm mostly buying are, are US government agency bonds, okay? Now, having said that, we all hear speculation, you know, about, uh, the, how, or that the Fed should lower interest rates. So far, they have not, but I think the time has come. I think they will lower interest rates in September. But because of that speculation, rates have already gone down. Financial markets are already pricing in that interest rate drop. So what I'm saying is, what you, I used to be able to get 5% on bonds, I'm now not, I'm not able to get that anymore. I'm now getting more like, hmm, about four and a quarter, or even slightly less on those same, same types of bonds. And, um, so I just take that into consideration. I will tell you that in, right in the beginning of July, um, we did have a certificate of deposit mature at Farmer's Emergence. It was for six months at four and a half percent. I was, I couldn't, can't get four and a half percent anymore. That's why, that everything's, the, the rates are going down a little bit. I was able to get four and a quarter percent, and I stretched it out as long as I could for one year. So that's, that's, I thought that was positive. But then I also, this time every year, I also wanna talk about the amount of interest earned in the city for the past fiscal year. Um, and that's, this is the meeting that I, I announced that, and I wanna kinda give you a little perspective. So three years ago, so fiscal year ending 2022, the city earned about $350,000 in interest. Now, I always say, you know, understand, please understand. Now, I always say, you know, understand, please understand, that pool of money gets spread out among, like, I call them 52 or 53 subaccounts. So it gets spread out among, among a many, all the different departments and, you know, I'll say subdepartments within the city. So that's the, the, and what happens is that all these departments pool the money and that's the money I have to invest with. So three years ago, we earned $350,000 in interest. If you remember last fiscal year, we, as a city, earned about slightly short of 4 million, we earned 3,900,000. But this past fiscal year, when I was able to get the higher rates, we broke a record, okay? And that record, 5,833,977.60. So we made 5.8 million dollars just in, in interest earned. Again, that gets spread out among all those different subaccounts, so it all doesn't go into the general fund or all doesn't go to police or, or anything like that, it gets spread out. But that, we as the city of Galt, and I've been here a long time now, we as the city of Galt have never, ever even dreamed of, of earning this much interest, which is phenomenal. Now, I will tell you, because the interest rates are going down, I do not expect that same amount for this current fiscal year. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. I'm not a miracle worker, okay? So with that, I'll ask that the council approve the treasurer's report ending June of 2025. I'll accept any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Farrell before I give him questions? Just jump in if you do.
I did have one thing to point out that, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you remember, that last time we had this report, our unemployment was much higher than the county. And now, we are now lower than the county. So whatever you did to get people employed in the city of Galt, keep doing that. But that was some good positive information for us that I noticed from last time.
Yeah, I, I agree, it is positive. We're just slightly below the county average.
I, I have a clarifying question, or no, I don't know, clarifying, but how much money do you get to play with? Is it a percentage of the budget or, you know, how much do you invest each?
Oh, okay, great question. So for the month ending June 2025, all total, and this includes like, say, the city's checking account, the money market account, what we have in the state of California, local agency investment funds, we have, as you know, the CD at Farmers Emergence Bank, we have, as I said, mostly I invest in US government agencies that are callable, and then there's a small sweep account associated with those, with those. So all total, ending June, 144,607,000.
That's not what you im.
That's not what I make, no.
If so, do you, you need a new daughter or something like that? No, I guess what my question is, is how much, because I know we have a reserve, right? It's 25% of our budget, right? So do you have a, is there a percentage that you, because you're giving back, right? You make the interest and you give that back or you give it to us?
That all goes, right?
So how much is actually invested of the, if we needed to pull everything that you get to play with, how much, do you know how much that is or if it's a percentage of?
Well, it's the total I just gave you. I mean, that's the whole pool that gets invested. And I have every single dollar working for, for us. And again, I always want to emphasize, this is taxpayer money, okay? And we, everything we do up here and, and staff, it's all for the taxpayers. So that is the total pool that, that I have to invest. And yes, some stays, certainly we have to have so much in our checking account and then the rest of it, you know, I, I invest with the, with the, you know, with the, with the objectives in mind, which I always talk about, safety first, then liquidity, making sure we have enough liquidity to, for six months to, to meet our obligations. And then, of course, then I, I look for the highest yield and what makes sense for the taxpayer.
Gotcha, thank you.
Did that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, now it clicked, sorry, it just took, it took a little bit longer.
Well, Sean, you know, I always enjoy your reports. You know, the unemployment rate thing, I always take as a grain of salt because, you know, I mean, there's a lot of people out there just aren't looking for work, so, I mean, you don't factor those people in. It is good to hear about the interest we've made and obviously, you know, you could, you know, it'd be easy for the council to say, you know, well, on my term at council, we made a record number of whatever, but the reality is that it's nothing that we really did, you know, it's just economic circumstances, rates were good, you know, COVID affected all, I mean, there's just so many factors. I know you do a really good job, so if anybody deserves credit about investing, it would be you. You are earning every penny of that $20 per day that you make for investing 144 million dollars.
Thank you.
I think we should give you a raise, I think you should make $21 a day.
I, I, I will ask for a raise right now, how about that? And as a matter of fact, once you guys get one, too.
Honestly, Mr. Farrell, you may be the most successful investor in the entire United States for what you make per dollar, like, we're getting a smoking bargain.
Actually, I think that's true, actually. For $20 a day, you're right.
It could be.
Yeah, I think you're right.
It could be.
Wait, he makes $20 a day?
$600 a month, right?
And what are we?
I mean, it's public, public information.
That is, that is correct, yes, $600 per month.
$600 a month for investing 144 million dollars.
But I also want to point out, and in fairness, okay, in fairness, and I, I'm gonna turn it back on you guys, and I don't know if the public is aware of this, but city council members make $300 per month, okay? And they, they honestly have not had raises in 20-plus years, okay? As treasurer, I have not had a raise in 35 years.
But there's plenty of money.
So, and, and with, I'm, and I'm, this is just public record, everybody knows this, okay? So I just want to, truly, and I mean this sincerely, the, the city should really look at, you know, truly giving the city council members increases for all the work that you guys do, all the outside meetings that you have to attend, all the emails that you get, you know, even in the last 48 hours. And, and also.
Well, they got paid by email.
Yeah, yeah. And, and truly, and, and, and again, I, I want to be, you know, I, I guess humble about this, but yeah, it's time to pay me, too, okay? I mean, it really is. Because if you outsourced, and this is no lie, okay? If you outsourced what I do here to an outside, outside person, this, the city would be paying $150,000 per year, okay? And that's no joke.
At least, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate the pitch, so, but.
Well, no, I, I would, I would like to see this truly, the city council members on it.
Well, we, we appreciate your selfless service for all these years, Sean, all these years. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But I also want to point out something that's funny, too, when we talk about this, and I meant to say this last time we had treasurer report, but I always find it fascinating in the city that, and not everybody, but you'll always hear the public will say, when you hear these numbers, like, we made the most interest we've ever made, right? There's the people will say, you know, when, when the news is good, right, and the city's made good interest, right, the city's made, has done well, took taxpayer money and done good things with it, right? There's always those that will say, oh, they're just, you know, raking the citizens over the coals with the water rates and this rates and the taxes and whatever like that. But if we're doing bad and you're sitting here telling us we lost 5 million and our investments were horrible, they didn't want to run us out of town on a rail. So it's like, it's a no-win situation with whatever, you're doing, you know, doing well with taxpayer money, they're mad at you because, you know, but the reality is that, that, you know, this money serves the community and you've done well with it, and I think that we're seeing a very unique time and we may never see this for another two decades because of the unique, uniqueness of that.
You'll still be here, right? Two decades.
I, you know, to my, I'm hoping, let's just say that.
If we give you $25 a day?
Twenty, yeah, $25 a day.
My last comment before I move off the subject is, you mentioned the rates and how they're already, like, they see the rate drop coming.
Right.
So when it serves the purpose, the, you know, financial institutions will go ahead and lower that rate ahead of time, right?
Right.
They don't want to give out anymore, they have to, they, oh, well, the rates are gonna go down.
Yeah.
It's funny that they do that when it serves a purpose, right? It's almost like I'm seeing a big increase in, in costs for my business because they're saying, oh, it's because tariffs are coming. You know, the tariffs aren't actually affecting them yet, but they're raising them in anticipation of tariffs, right? It's funny, so everyone has to deal with that, but anyways, so if you have any further questions for Sean, I will be looking for a motion to approve the treasurer's report. So that motion is moved by the vice mayor.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pratton, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Approved five zero, thanks, sir. Moving on to Human Resources Department, our first item is the Resolution Memor- Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Galt and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 39 Salary Schedules Amendments to Benefits. Ms. Kobe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item presented before you tonight is the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 39 Memorandum of Understanding. We are recommending that the council adopt a resolution approving the I U O E Local 39 Memorandum of Understanding Salary Schedules and Amendments to Benefits. The summary of the changes to the MOU include a three, three-year term from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028, a 1% increase for positions already within the median base salary and market adjustments for other classifications over a three-year term, a $50 monthly increase towards bilingual pay for certified employees, $100 annual increase for boot allowance, one additional hour of on-call pay for employees scheduled, 100% city contribution towards employee-only medical coverage and continuation of the city's 80% contribution for employee plus one and family health insurance coverage for the Kaiser Premium. Update to the longevity eligibility, bringing all staff from 15 and 20 years of service to 10 and 15 years of service. And finally, increasing the, the vacation accrual after 22 years of service equivalent to six weeks. The annual fiscal impact of these changes is approximately 302,878. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the negotiations team, which includes Alex, Alex DiJogo, Dustin Watson, John Costa, Kyle Land, and the I U O E representative, Peyton Martin, for their partnership and collaboration as we work towards a successor MOU. Does the council have any questions on this item?
Counsel? No, no, just like to say that it's, well, I thank all the parties involved on both sides for, you know, coming up with what we thought was fair and compromised and, you know, for the betterment of the employees and, and the city. And, you know, these are always the hard times for the council, you know, you're dealing with employees and staff and some, you know, some of, it's a small town, so you know some of them and stuff, so it's, it's always a difficult time, you know, we want to do what we can. But I'm glad we got through it and this is the last of the, of the, of the, of these, so. With that, if there's no questions, counsel, we move in, looking for a motion to adopt a resolution, number one, approving the memorandum of understanding and revised salary schedules with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 339 for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30th of 2028. Number two, authorizing the amendment of fiscal year 25 slash 26 budget to fund salary and benefit adjustments. And number three, authorizing the city manager to execute and carry out these agreements and amendments.
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Reed.
A second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rodriguez, can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Yes. Approved five zero. All right, item two, I'm sorry, item three of the regular calendar is gonna be the interim city manager contract amendment, Ms. Kobe.
Thank you, this next item presented for your consideration is the Second Amendment to the Employment Agreement for City Manager Arias. The revisions to the contract include a market adjustment based on the September 2024 salary survey, consistent with our approach during negotiations, the same adjustment has been extended to all employees, bringing staff to 5% below the median over multiple year terms. Accordingly, these changes, the changes to the agreement align with the benefits provided across the organization and are in line with the city's compensation philosophy. The fiscal impact of this amendment is approximately $19,000 for the remaining term of the contract. Does the council have any questions on this item?
So just to clarify, Ms. Kobe, this is the, the, I guess, for lack of a better word, the cookie cutter that we did across all the unions and mid-management, everybody, department has included, everybody, was to use the same salary study applies to everybody, we move everybody within 5% of the median, if you're already within the median, typically what was done is there was like a 1%. So the only thing for the public who are watching is, the only person who's kind of outside of this is the city manager, who's at one unique position. So the council does have a discretion to treat that as an isolated thing and do nothing or do basically whatever we want. And, and what we have here is a, a recommendation, basically presenting that we do the same with city managers we've done everybody else. So when is your, when, when is your term up, Mr. Arias, I forget? Somebody told me you have a day count. Is that true? Are you that in a rush to leave us?
No, I, yeah.
So, but what is it again, I'm sorry?
Believe the, the end of February 2020.
Okay. Okay. All right, does anybody have any questions on this item to Ms. Kobe?
Oh, I don't have a question, but just a comment. The reason I'm gonna support this tonight, and this is the first city manager I work for, he said he does not want to increase his salary, but the reason is, I'm supporting or I believe everybody else hopefully will support his delegation, his hard work, and that's the most important thing, his performance from last year and a half. I believe every council member that I believe, he asked and he provided it. And there's a short comment I would like to, before I approve that agenda item. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I would like to echo that as well. I, Chris did say that, you know, he is, expressed that he's, you know, wasn't something that was a priority to him and, and, and I do appreciate that. And I have to say, along with, you know, out of the five of us been sitting up here, the vice mayor and I have served, you know, the whole time together and, you know, we went through several city managers, you know, we went through Chris being the fourth after the last city manager. And so to, to, what I believe is, I don't, I don't believe, I really don't believe in doing things just because you're saying, well, we did it for this person, we should do it for that. That's not why I'm supporting this tonight, I'm just being, gonna be clear on that, because if anybody's followed me, I, I'm the first person that'll say, Nick, no, I really do believe in merit-based stuff, although that's not always the way government works. But I believe Chris has done a phenomenal job, you know, bringing him in as an interim. I, I was, I had some, some reservations because him and I butted heads on some projects back when he was, he was here as a department head. But I would have to say that as a, as a, as a city manager, you know, we went from, in my opinion, having one of the worst city managers, and our prior city manager, to Chris, who in my opinion has been the best city manager that, that we've had, at least in my tenure, and maybe as long as I can even remember, to be honest with you. And, and I base that on several factors, I base that on the factors that, most importantly, his relationship with the council is very good. I think nothing can be more important than a city manager that understands that he works for the council and the council works for the people. So directly, so by proxy, he works directly for the people, I think he needs to understand that. And his actions reflect that. I know my communication is very good with Chris, if I need something, even if it's not important, he's right there, he's like, what do you need, what, whatever. When I bring a concern, no matter how small that concern from a citizen, I bring it to him, it's a, he makes it a, he makes it important. So for that, I feel like it's well-deserved. I think that when he leaves, whoever fills his spot will have big shoes to fill, I think. Hopefully, he will keep remaining on the same track and the, and that person will follow your example, Chris. So with that, I will be looking for a motion to. So with that, I will be looking for a motion to approve this item. Uh, the Second Amendment to Employment Agreement with Chris Arias interim city manager with corresponding budget adjustment and authorizing the mayor to execute the Second Amendment. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Moved, and I will second that. So moved by the Vice Mayor and seconded by the Mayor. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Pratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Yes. Approved five zero. Item M, congra-, uh, communications.
None.
All right. Item N, city clerks report.
None.
Item O, comments by staff?
Uh, we do have a couple. I'll start with Parks Rec Director, uh, Armando Solis.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to remind you that we had our first parade workshop on Monday. We had ten business owners show up. Uh, we got three new proposals, so we have a total of six, uh, parade routes to bring to you so far. We have, um, another meeting set up for the public this coming Monday at the Shabola Center at six P M. That is open to the public. And, um, once we get all that information, uh, work with Public Works and the Police Department to come up with the pros, cons, costs, we'll bring those to you. I'm hoping to have them to you in October.
All right. Public Works Director, John Griffin?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. On Friday, August eighth, A P A W A Sacramento recognized the C Streets Enhancement Project as one of their Projects of the Year, their twenty twenty-five Project of the Year Award Ceremony. So I want to take a moment just to recognize the entire team, uh, city staff, uh, the C M team of K S N and Cal- Salaburn Associates and George Ritter Contractor, as were the recipients of this award. So these are something we don't take lightly. We don't receive these very often. I think the last one we received may have been the roundabouts on Twin Cities.
And then followed by your police chief, uh, Brian Kalanowski.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I, I'm sorry, sir.
Do you follow, fill out a speaker card?
I need to. Congratulations on your rise. So, a couple of things for the Council. Next Tuesday, we will have the fourth anniversary and the reefering at the Galt Police Department at twelve o'clock, um, honoring the sacrifice of Harmon de Graywall. And then immediately following that, at one P M., we will be out at the Liberty Ranch Development at Officer Graywall Parkway and Marengo, where we will do a sign unveiling similar to what we did on C Street some weeks back. And the developer has been nice enough to provide some additional signage for the family to keep in perpetuity. So we will have the reefering at twelve and the sign unveiling at one o'clock. And we are queued up if all things go, um, as planned, but you can never, you never know with Sacramento. The anticipation is finally, after I can't remember how many years of trying to get the resolution through for the freeway sign, should occur next Wednesday at the state Capitol, and we're trying to rally. It sounds like the family's available. Then I got to coordinate with the other side, which is the elected folks and the assembly calendar. So if everything comes together, we'll be able to do a presentation of resolution to, um, the family on Wednesday. As that flushes out, I will pass that information along to Counsel for anybody that wants to be there for that. Um, otherwise, we will get pictures and post that on social media. It's been a long journey, um, and that's where we are with that. Lastly, I did hear the comment about the disturbing the peace, which is penal code section four fifteen and the legal requirements in order for us to take action. I will assign a lieutenant to call that speaker and reaffirm what our legal obligations are in order for us to take police action, which is somebody to sign a complaint for disturbing the peace. Our, our pieces, our peace as police officers cannot be disturbed, so it has to be the one that's being disturbed. In this case, it sounds like there's some residents, and so it would require a complaint signed. Um, and it would go through the complaint process. It sounds like there may be some municipal code options uh, more civilly, um, related, and I will leave that to those folks that are in charge, but we will take care of the Police Department item. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
And so to finish up, uh, staff comments, I'd just like to say a couple of thank yous. I, I really want to thank, uh, our city attorney, Frank. Uh, he worked very hard this week, especially today, to help resolve that issue. And if you didn't know, he's on vacation in South Lake Tahoe, and the amount of time that he gave to us, uh, was just instrumental. And then, of course, Amy Mendez, uh, helping out on that project, very instrumental in helping get that, uh, to a satisfactory, uh, resolution. And then finally, I want to thank the Council for their support and, uh, vote of confidence. And I look forward to finishing out my hundred and one days, uh, working days I have left here, uh, to the best of my ability. So again, thank you very much. I do appreciate the vote of confidence.
You're welcome, Chris. All right. We'll move on to comments by Counsel and future agenda items. Mr. Pratton?
Oh, not much, not much. Tonight, I, uh, I did fail earlier, Mr. Griffin, to thank you for, as part of the, the Fairway Oaks project, and that was a lot. So I appreciate that. And congratulations on the, uh, project of the year. That's awesome. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Sandu?
All right, very short. Thank you for all staff, but their hard work, especially city manager, Amy Mendez, uh, John Griffin, all these, uh, agenda items was tonight. And also thank you for all the public comment. And thank you for whoever come to this meeting. Thank you for everybody. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mr. Reed?
Thank you. Uh, first off, I want to say, uh, welcome to Jennifer. I wasn't here when you were, uh, brought into this, uh, wonderful group, so welcome. Uh, second, I've already said thank you to everybody for public comment, but, you know, we wouldn't be doing what we're doing if we didn't, uh, hear from or represent you guys. Uh, the last thing I want to, uh, talk about is I actually attended a rally this more, this afternoon on the steps of the Capitol for, uh, an Assembly Bill Four Ninety-Five that, uh, is making a lot of people uncomfortable. Um, and what it's being pitched at, or what it's being said is that it will take away a lot of parental rights for children. And so now they're coming up with a custody form that can be signed by any adult, and they can take custody of your child and take them out of school, get them medical procedures, and so on and so forth. So I'm just encouraging everyone to look into it. Uh, if that's something that you don't support, reach out to your elected officials, not at this level, at the state level, because they're the ones that make this, uh, rulings. But I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And other than that, thanks for sticking it out for everybody that did till eight twenty in the evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Ms. Rodriguez?
So I have a real quick question for staff who has eight thirty.
Rodney.
Oh, okay. Um, a couple of questions, um, for Chief. Do we, do we have a noise ordinance? And if a vehicle is blaring their stereo and literally bouncing down the road, is that not something you can act on?
So the California Vehicle Code does have, uh, a loud music component, and we can address the vehicle code issues. I was only speaking to the, um, penal code section.
So, but do, so our ordinance, though, for residential to, to address that, it's not strong enough that the police can
Well, we
hear it and go, you know?
You need a measurement, you know? So the, the current noise ordinance, like all others in other cities, basically limits, uh, the D B As, uh, which is a noise measurement, either in nighttime or in the daytime. So if there is a complaint, you know, we would have to, like, measure it to determine whether or not they're in violation.
And that's not at the police level. It would be at code enforcement, which is
Or code enforcement.
unfortunate that code enforcement doesn't work when these things are happening.
Uh, we do, our code enforcement, uh, has been working off hours, uh, so there is the possibility of, you know, then I think the Speaker mentioned that, uh, our code enforcement supervisor, told him to call him if he hears it, so he can go and measure.
And then is there a fine affiliated with that, or what is the punishment?
There's a pro-, the normal code enforcement process would then take over. So, which is warning and then, uh, fines for future violations.
All right. Uh, but don't go away. Um, so I was glad to hear that the Public Safety Committee discussed this and then that the schools are discussing this, uh, the motorized bicycles, um, because I, it came to my mind, I actually had it written before y'all talked about it. Um, there's a couple of cities in California that are exploring or have already passed that you, no one under sixteen can ride them. Some of them aren't even, some of it is under eighteen because they're finding they're not safe. Um, I, I didn't get what the Public Safety Committee discussed about those, um, and if there was any recommendation from them that, for a possible change.
So they wanted, um, education to the community on the expectations to be wearing helmets, um, in, on bicycles, scooters, the whole, the, the whole gamut. And that's really what is, has been the issue. We've, is, as of today, I was at Valley Oaks in the fourth grade class talking about helmets with Sergeant Slater. So that's the message we're getting out, and, um, we continue to do that. I know somebody that runs a podcast that's going to have somebody on at the end of the month talking about that very same thing. So we're doing the education and following the state law. And I do know that cities, from time to time, will undertake, um, different efforts to codify, you know, the ability to do it through the municipal code. I don't think we've gotten there yet, mostly because we've been trying to catch up to the laws, and the laws are trying to catch up to the technology. Um, and it's emerging, uh, and the speeds are emerging and those kinds of things. So, uh, we continue to work on that, and, uh, when we have something substantial, we can run that through, um, the Public Safety Committee for, for your viewing when, but I need to coordinate that in conjunction with the other workload issues we have, uh, through the city attorney, so.
I, and I'm just curious if, you probably don't know off the top of your head, but if you happen to, if someone knows. My assumption is that these are pretty, um, easy to steal? Like a bicycle? Have, has there been an issue with that at all?
Nothing more than we don't already have with regular bicycles being stolen by individuals. So, and scooters and uh, if they're not locked up properly or left out in front of a store. I mean, we do get those, and it's a crime opportunity for those looking for that.
Right. Okay. Um, but before you go, no, it's a good thing. Um, I attended National Night Out, and it was awesome. You guys put together a great, a great event at all three places, so I really appreciate it. And I wasn't trying to avoid Galt. I just got offered a ride by Highway Patrol.
No, that's, that's fine. We were fortunate enough to have the Commissioner of the Highway Patrol at all three sites, so that's kind of a big deal, um, and a lot of his staff. And, uh, it was very well-attended, but the credit goes to my staff, specifically our community service officers, Julio who led it and Koby who supported him, and all the work, the businesses that supported, and um, it's a team effort. It's a lot of work for the staff to pull that off. A lot of jurisdictions really allow the community to have those events, and we just show up. But the dynamics of the Galt community is that's just something that the Police Department has led and created and, and make happen. So, um, they continue to refine it and, you know, jazz it up with some free TVs and different things to get people, uh, to be present. Uh, and we had a better turnout this year than we did last year. Some of it might have to do with the temperature. It's been a better summer, but we'll be back next year and, uh, take any feedback for any constructive criticism you may have. That will come to me, but the credit goes to the staff.
Yeah, they, it was phenomenal, and the parks were beautiful. So thank your staff as well, because I'm sure they did a lot beforehand and then after, I'm sure a lot more. But really appreciate all of staff and, and all of that for what, what they did. It was very appreciated. Um, and you guys are going to be really busy Monday then, I guess. You're going to have strategic planning and then have that meeting right after. Have fun. Okay. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. So Mr. Mort's the eight thirty? So I get five minutes in? I do have a few things. It might take five minutes, so I apologize in advance. Uh, I wanted to say thank you for National Night Out. It was very well-attended. It was really nice, good. The weather was really, really good, and I, I enjoyed, uh, you know, I, I, we got out of here late, so I drove myself to all the parks. Um, I didn't get, I didn't get the, you know, motorcade. Didn't, didn't get to ride in the motorcade this year, sorry. Um, but I do want, I, I was going to say before Ms. Rodriguez said, I do want to thank you, Armando, and your staff for keeping the, the parks looking nice. You, you know what it reminds me of is, is someone told me, um, the best gratitude, uh, the best thank you that you can get as a council member is empty seats in the chambers. When there's empty seats, that means that people are semi-happy with what's going on. They don't have anything to complain about. Obviously, they were full tonight, and there was, yeah. But where I tie this in with you, Armando, is I don't hear any complaints about anything in Parks and Rec, and I haven't been. And, and although you would love to hear the thank yous and people saying that to you, the lack of complaining really is the gratitude that you can expect, unfortunately. So pass that along to your people, please. Um, uh, I, I do want to think, uh, on the subject that she was talking to Chief, I do want to thank Chief and your staff for your social media, um, especially your videos. Um, they're very good. They're very educational. I do think, um, you know, that topic about the bikes and stuff is, is becoming, it's becoming more prevalent, and it's make, it's going to become a bigger deal in the community. And, and I think that, uh, if you guys continue on the path you're doing, and you guys have a great social media team, and you guys have a ton of followers, and so you're, you have a massive outreach with that stuff. Uh, we should continue that. I, I wouldn't mind seeing at some point, maybe, and it's not, it's not urgent, but at some point, maybe, that we could have a, just a brief presentation by P D, uh, on just specifically the rules and the parameters around, you know, what constitutes an e-bike? Does it have to have pedals? What if it doesn't have pedals? I had a kid today riding in front of me on the middle of the street on an electric dirt bike. He was literally in the lane on C Street, going down in front of me. Had a helmet on, but I was like, I know you can't ride a, a gas-powered dirt bike down the middle of the street without a license plate, and the kid was probably not even a lift of a driver's license. I'm like, what are the, you know, so I think a lot of the parent, and I did speak to some parents today that actually their son has one. I think that a lot of the families and parents in the community don't understand the rules and laws. They just know their kid wants this, and so they buy it for them, and they don't really understand how fast it goes, and is there certain classifications? And I know that I'm about to get educated and all that by, um, by their two officers that are going to, you know, come talk to me on the twenty-seventh on our show. But I, I think, I think it would be important to, uh, have an educational piece out there and, and, and so through social media, maybe at the Council. Um, but I think it's important that we do that. So, um, thank you for bringing that up, um, Bonnie. Lastly, I just wanted to say, uh, you know, in regards to you guys talking about the parade route thing, you know, it is important that, uh, people realize the amount of outreach that, I, I mean, you know, we came on to, Paul and I came on to a council where we feel like, you know, it was like, well, we have public meetings, we have council meetings, if people want to say something, they have, you know, we, we publicly notice the meetings. They know where they can come speak. But as we know, people normally don't come and speak, right? But I've always said this from day one, and I think that everybody here actually feels the same, is we don't need to just make information available for people to come find it. We need to push information. Because people in our society don't just go looking for it. They, they have to almost have it pushed in their face. And with that, I want to commend, you know, our social media team, Amy and Genesis, everybody who's been involved with that. Our social media with the City of Galt has like, just, is like a complete night and day change. The Police Department, as I just mentioned, they have a phenomenal social media presence, which is, you know, fantastic, and we would, the city would hopefully catch up to that. Um, but these community meetings, like with the parade routes, the outreach that you guys were doing with the Cornell and the Ranch Road people, um, we've had outreach on a number of things that I can remember where we've had community forums. Um, that is all a, um, an example of us doing things that we don't have to do, but we do those to show the public that we do care what their input is, and we do care about what they think. And now, sometimes they're not well-attended, but, but the fact is we're making that, that effort. And I think that, um, like I said, coming from where Paul and I first came on the councils, where we're at now is just completely night and day on that. So I just want to thank everybody, you know, staff across the board for all of those efforts because it's important, and I want to, you know, that, I think the, the public is not aware of how, how big of a change there has been in the last few years, so. So with that, that's all I have. I'm not going to keep rambling. Um, looks like I got you right on. You owe me lunch. We're going to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty. Good night.
If you went five or ten more minutes, Tricia would have had it.